Board of Selectmen. The first thing on the agenda tonight is the public hearing. I have to put my glasses on. Or bond note of over $100,000 for Whitney Hall. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I move that we open a public hearing. A bond or note over $1,000 as it regards Whitney Hall and the town offices and library.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
I.
So. Who wants to lead off on this? I mean. Shall I read the bond?
Yeah, there you go.
I think so. Hearing in accordance with RSA 338-A regarding bonds or notes of over $100,000. Discuss the expansion and renovation of Whitney Hall, Enfield Town Offices and Enfield Public Library. Currently estimated at 4.7 million. I thought it was more than that.
This notice was put out before the updated numbers.
Okay. This hearing is relative to proposed article, to a proposed article on the 2022 town meeting warrant for vote. At the second session business meeting of the 2022 town meeting. And the hearing, the second hearing just been canceled. So this is the one we're focused on. Ed, do you want to address this or for an article or fill in the blanks in any way?
I can talk a little bit, yes.
Okay.
The number that was warned before we got the updated numbers was off. So the, the new number for the Whitney Hall expansion from Redlow was 5,802,150 dollars. For what was proposed by them. As you remember, in the, in the meeting, there were some options on the back of the cost sheet that we handed out as well.
Right.
Wanted to change any of those.
That was the net zero. Net zero options.
Faulted ceilings, lower temperature heats up. Yes.
So I'm inclined, I mean, I think my personal view is that this has been going on for a very, very long time. It's been studied and I think we have a responsibility to put it before the voters. And to get feedback and if we can just keep waiting. But then it's not going to generate the discussion that we've already had. We've already started with some good discussions. So I'd like, I'd like to see it go forward. Obviously we have to update the number. And I personally feel pretty strongly that we should be adding in some of these alternatives. In particular, I would really like to see us be going towards net zero. So I do think adding modern energy provisions is important. To me, the other thing is that we know since this was drawn up originally, not just the new cost, but since the plan was made. The library has had an opportunity within the budget and in a natural cycle of things to replace some of the furniture. So I think there's some opportunity to cut costs there.
Yeah, I agree. I think it would be better to cut some things frills, if you will. And, and get into the serious stuff like net zero. We have a moral obligation if we consider.
Right.
And we would be.
It's voting on the bottom line never and then the town office, if my understanding, would oversee the project and make, and with our direction to move in that way. I think it would be pretty reasonable to assume we could find some cost savings. Take some, and obviously we're not going to throw away new furniture. We're New Englanders. We're not letting anything perfectly good go, especially not this building. So I feel like that's an area of cost savings we could use towards the net zero. And then I also know from talking with two of the trustees that there's additional funds that have been pledged in another match. So I feel like. Once this, this project goes to town meeting and if the town commits to it, you're going to see additional pledges be filled and get additional money. So we can't make a promise to the public of that, right?
Right. We can't base our decision on what if maybe.
No, no, of course not. So we have to bond to the full amount and be very fair to people. And so we do that. But I, you know, there, there is the money that's committed from the library already. So I feel pretty comfortable that we could fit that net zero or at least as energy efficient as we can make it.
Right.
Are there any provisions to reduce the size and scope of this project?
We can look at, I mean, I think everything's up in the air, optional for until we get our architect.
So this is, this is, in other words, this is a starting point.
Yeah.
I, I know, I do worry though, everybody goes into things like what can we reduce? And we saw this with the school district. Now they took out some auditorium seats. It doesn't save you a ton of money. It saves, yeah, so because you're just reducing this square footage that you can stand on. You saw those outer walls. And at the end of the day, maybe you don't fill it to, pack to the room with every single stack you want. But leaving some latitude there, especially for donor type opportunities. You know, we could have probably put in hindsight more auditorium seats and using donor funds. And had the envelope, the price of the additional envelope was, square footage was not super high. So I think I would be interested in honoring what the committee worked through because I think they did very extensive workup. And I'm definitely no authority on building, nor do I pretend to be an architect. But I feel like everybody on the committee, and as Phil said himself. So. You know, and he was the leader of the MFA team and the chair of that committee. He went into this project completely opposed to it. So I think that's a really interesting piece to know that somebody went in, but who really intended to go in with a fine tooth comb. And we know that due diligence piece, let's take it, because that's very, very important to have somebody who is fundamentally opposed to getting it worked out. So that's just my thoughts.
I would agree that I think we do need to put this forward for the people to vote on. I do agree with the net zero or getting close to that kind of level. I, I think you gotta be very cautious about cutting down. The infrastructure. Because we don't know what we're going to need 30 years from now, 40 years from now. Or longer. You know, it's gonna be a long time before Enfield gets it together and gets the momentum to do something like this again, I think. Yeah, but if, if we can cut out a little bit here and there without really damaging the overall plan. I think that's something we should look at. I think people expect that on this. So I vote that we put this forward.
So shall we formalize the vote?
Well, I think we have to take, it's a public hearing, so we take input and then we close it and then we would formalize.
We have a blue light.
When you open the public hearing.
So comments from the public.
Do you want to formally open the public hearing?
I thought we did. We did. Yes.
I'm Tracy Young. As you know, I was on the MFA committee.
Right.
And so I, I know the, the project quite well. A couple of points I'd like to make. I of course support the project and so I'd like to suggest a couple of things that we should do in terms of presenting it to the public. First point being that I believe we should promote a bond. Which is in the area of 12,500,000 dollars. Now, the reason I suggest that number is because if done competitively. And it is Brett Lowe's intention, of course, because they are a construction manager, to bid all the phases of the work. When you see a project like that go with a company like a construction manager, you will find that the only people who actually work for the construction company will be the superintendent and someone to pick up the trash. All of the phases of the work will be bid to two or three subcontractors to get competitive pricing. So there will be ample opportunity for representatives of the town to be involved in that. That's going to save some money all by itself. I believe the bond should also say that it is the intention of the town to seek energy efficient engineering to achieve the best possible energy savings on the project without actually saying net zero. It's very, very difficult to achieve net zero without a source of energy. A giant photo will take field somewhere, for example, which Enfield simply doesn't have. So it's important the bonds say that it is the intention to engineer a facility that has, facilities that have the best possible energy efficiency available. And that the project would be reviewed by specialists, probably even outside of Redlow, who will analyze the design. But by authorizing a bond at this point with a sum and perhaps even specifying Redlow. I believe that allows them to proceed with the design phase. As we mentioned the other day, eight to nine months. If we concentrate on the Whitney Hall facility first, I'm not saying construct it first, but I'm saying concentrate on it first. That design can probably be achieved by the end of this summer, I'm sure. And possibly break ground on the addition part by the winter time. The second point being on the second facility, I'd like to say that the bond should probably say is the town's intention to pursue negotiations for the property required for the emergency services building. I think stating that it's the intention to proceed to find that piece of land to negotiate with the school board is an important aspect of moving everything forward. And it takes that question out of the picture.
Can I just get a clarifying answer from either Ed or Lisa? I'd like to know, are we, I think maybe in terms of posting and how we posted this, not knowing that there was going to be. I guess as much support potentially in the info sessions for public safety. Did we miss the posting timeline?
I'm trying to read it on the very tiny.
We did warn this meeting for Whitney Hall.
For Whitney Hall. We'd have to have another meeting.
I don't think we can do that tonight because it.
No, no, no. And that's why I'm asking the clarified question. So it's not that we're ignoring it. It's that the way we warned it was. And the, the reason we wanted this way was because that project is basically more or less of already. Yes.
We have a question from the Zoom.
I think you could warn.
I think David Bucfay has his hand up.
I do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I, the question, I guess is confusing to me is are we doing bond? Are, are you considering bond for both projects now? And what is the, what is the dollar amount that you're asking for? Or is it, is it an open ended? Discuss, for discussion and decision.
The dollar amounts, so this hearing was only noticed for Whitney Hall, so the library and town office project. And the project cost from Brett Lowe's latest figures is 5,802,150 dollars. And so. That is, that's where our discussion right now is headed. The secondary clarification point I just asked was in regards to if we wanted to warn the public safety facility. Would we even be able to make the timeline? And that is what they're working on.
Thank you.
She ready?
Yes. So what, what I, what I understand what you're saying is that on the Warren article.
This is just to put it on the war.
Exactly. But it's going to get voted on, correct?
Right.
And it's voting for a bond. Which would allocate, say, okay, go ahead and let's go right back into the hands of the town manager and then. Off to the races. That's what happened before. You know, it was, he wanted money for a study and look where, and look where we are. With all these, all these buildings and, and it was boom, boom, boom. And most of the people, I know these folks were retarded. I went to many of the meetings, but. I still think that Enfield needs to step back and look at it. And it's not time. I mean, people are to be. It's costing a lot of money right now.
Well, that's where the vote at town meeting will come in.
The third thing is what didn't exist is a master plan, which is coming. And the master plan works on. The future of the town and how are we going to really build it? And do we want an emergency facility up on that hill away from the schools and the kids and things like that? I mean, do we want to ruin all the historic in Whitney Hall, lose the stage because of the importance of economic development? In, that's going to take place in this town. And people have to realize that me, things that are going to make you money are things like historic, there's to bring people in. And. I'm nervous because this just goes like a slam dunk. And it makes me erect because we're going to be out 12 different ways and we're going to lose our focus. That's what I got.
Surely.
Is there ever a right, a good time to do something like this? Library and Whitney Hall is needed. And town offices have great needs for over 15, 20 years. And there comes a time when you just need to do something. I know that if the community sees that this is moving forward. There's going to be a lot more money come in to support it on our fundraising and there'll be other.
Well, will it when the taxes go up? Will there be the extra money when people's tax bills go up dramatically?
You know, tax bills aren't going to really go up dramatically. And we have those figures, do we not, on a, the average house in Enfield?
Yeah, it'd be about $50 per 100,000.
I mean, when you talk about what brings people to Enfield, doesn't preserving a historic building like that make a difference? It certainly does. It doesn't have a, the safe place for, for the town offices so people can work there?
Yes, I agree.
Make a difference?
I agree.
And also the library produced so much more for the community if there were more room. And that building will save a lot of money just by being energy efficient. The shy agree on that. Yeah, I mean, I do agree that we need this and that probably is a priority.
Well, let's not have a back and forth.
Study, how long is that going to put it up? People on this committee really spend a lot of time making decisions.
Okay, we have other people that want to speak and this is going to be a long meeting, so I want to give everybody an opportunity. Bridget?
I just wanted to clarify. I think it's important to remember though, that the master plan is there to provide a guidance to our town leadership of the direction of the town, not so much about the specific buildings, but about the town itself and what people would like to see. And so that's why we were always looking for feedback. So just kind of a reminder, I don't want any, any bad press on the master plan that we are not looking to refer buildings being built. We are just looking to provide guidance based on feedback.
Thanks. Kurt?
I'm curious as to when, which year or general year allow a major renovation has been done on Whitney Hall? And what's, where was involved?
It was back in the 90s, I believe.
I, I was actually, I have a note to myself to find the date in my notes right here. I was just looking for that.
Was it the 90s?
The police, the police station was there on the little right hand side up over the porch. And that was pulled out, obviously, and moved into the new facility. They changed, they have like the back room. And really it was not.
They did all the drugs.
And destroyed the stage.
Yeah, it's down just under 30 years and that was here when I did it. And I believe it was painted once, not all four sides.
We are New Englanders.
Right.
Roof had never been touched.
And unfortunately we painted something that probably had some dry rot, so it didn't all stay stuck.
Right, so.
It was painted about 10 years ago. I remember they came to the Heritage Commission for advice or color. It's been a while.
Every winter it's been, it's been consistently cold, so it hasn't shown up so far. But every past winter, we go down the driveway and you look up, you see the frozen icicles coming out of the site.
Yeah.
And it's not going to come to the roof. It's coming out of the site.
Yeah.
So there's problems underneath that site.
I think we're all aware of that.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's going to cost money.
You're right, Kurt. It's desperately in need of work.
And if you work those numbers out over the past 20, 20 years. That's why you're paying now. Because it wasn't spent every year.
And I think as many of us probably who own older homes and love historic buildings, I live in an older home. Sometimes you find a piece and you're lucky and you get to save it and you save it. And sometimes you're like, well, this didn't go the way you want, right? But that's why we had the engineering, I mean, obviously they didn't rip out every wall, but we had the architectural and engineering review done of all of the buildings. Not just Whitney Hall, we did this building and everything. And I think that was a really important component of not rushing into things was really taking the time to. And do some real study and then do some discernment, which is what the MFA committee did, about what do we do with the problems that were found? Because, you know, every building has problems over time. And I'm really excited that this year in the budgets, we're actually committing to a position to do upkeep.
There are no other questions. Yes?
I, I attended the last, the two meetings last week. And I'm just curious, I'm all for renovating Whitney Hall and the library. I think that's brutal, that, you know, that should be the first thing on the docket. I'm a little curious as to why the, I, I don't know the terminology, but the warning for this article was only about the library today. When last week we had discussions about lumping the whole thing together with the, with the public safety building and the library. And trying to get funding for both projects at the same time. Partly because the interest rates are low now. We don't pay the money until we actually spend it. So it's not like we have to do the public service meeting right now. So I'm just a little curious as to why this left work.
It wasn't a select board decision.
Whose decision was it?
The Board of Selectmen did decide to go ahead with the Whitney Hall renovation, which is why we noticed that public hearing. The municipal facility informational meetings were on.
So that was several meetings ago.
Yes. So the Board of Selectmen has to have a public hearing on lots of those over $100,000, 15 to 60 days prior to the vote. So you in fact can put one, either the other or both on the warrant. And approve that before your hearings. Don't have to have the hearing first and then put it on the warrant. So that's up to the board. If the meeting is held in April, as has been decided at this point, though you have options still. Then you would have to hold, you probably have to hold another public hearing because it can't be more than 60 days.
Okay.
But the warrant's going to have to be finalized before that end of that.
Oh, so what is the?
The hearing and the warrant are not necessarily.
Which, where do we go?
I mean, I, so this is, I don't think we've addressed this kind of approach yet in the sense of what I'm about to say. And that is not just the interest rates being low, but we're also locking into today's dollars. So if we were to next year, go back or in a couple of years, go back for public safety, that number is going to be higher. So even if it takes us a little while, we're locking in the lower number, we're committing to building it for the lower number. And I personally like the idea of committing to the lower number and making it work.
Do you want to make a motion to that?
Well, yeah, so I don't think we, I can't make a motion in the public hearing, but once we go out of public hearing, I'd like to put Whitney Hall on and amend the dollar amounts. And then I'd like to notice a public hearing and I guess, I think, I don't know how you guys feel, but about two Warren articles or if it should be. I really worked that out. Mostly because I want to hear what other people think.
Tracy?
So if I understand you correctly, you would warn an article for tonight or prepare an article tonight that would only be for Whitney Hall and therefore you would choose a sum of money that would be for Whitney Hall? And then you would warn a second meeting, which would be the discussion of the public services building?
So we have two ways we could go. We could decide tonight to, to warn the meeting and then go ahead and put a Warren article that was a single one. Or we could do as step one, do the Whitney Hall as one Warren article, warn the meeting and do, and, but we still put the second Warren article on. So there's two approaches and that's, I, I want to be open and have an open discussion about it because I'm not necessarily sold one way or another. But I think we have a duty and responsibility to take this before the voters. We've done the work and I feel like it should go before the voters and get an up or down vote. And really see what they, what their pleasure is. I don't know what your thoughts are. Are there a view on one versus two? I, I'm kind of leaning to articles. Because I feel like the library trustees have kind of separately committed, I guess that's, and maybe the trustees would weigh in on, on their feelings. Whether they would rather be versed into one or not, but I'd like to honor the hard work that they put in.
Shirley, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I didn't hear what you said.
I'm, I'm sorry. So I, I'm, yeah, so I'm curious. Would you feel as trustees, and this is just totally off the cuff, so I apologize for not asking the question before. But we do all of our things in public meetings, so here we are. So would you, as a trustee, would you feel more comfortable having a library Whitney Hall bond on one article and the public safety on a second article? Or would you feel more comfortable with them together as one?
Personally, I can only speak for myself.
Yeah, of course.
Speak for the other trustees. And. I just am concerned, but I know Whitney Hall needs immediate attention. And it's going to take two or three years probably to get the land situation settled for the, for the safety complex. And that's, that's my concern about having them together. But I, I'm not sure how it would go. But I just think that we can't wait two or three years with the mall.
Yeah, I think the other thought to think about is, you know, how you think it would have a better chance of passing. You know, if you're voting on one, 12 million.
Raise your voice a little bit. It's the.
The blower.
The darn blower makes sense.
I think if the, the Whitney Hall article were separate, it would have a better chance of passing.
Okay.
I agree.
And I, I think that's what we ought to do.
And the other thing is that there is some money in a library building capital reserve fund that is part of the wording of the article. It gets a little more complicated if you use that for one building but not the other.
Got it. Okay. That's really helpful. Oh, that seems pretty clear.
Tracy?
I, I, I agree with that, given especially the negotiated complication that's going to occur. I'd still like to see something out there perhaps as a Warren article that promotes the negotiation towards the purchase of the SAU land. It's already been identified publicly. I think it's just a case of.
Wouldn't you expand that to a site rather than focusing just on the SAU land? It would give you a lot more latitude.
I'd love to have another choice.
Well, leave it open. Why lock yourself?
Pursue, then, then perhaps you're right and it should simply say pursue the property required. For the construction of an emergency services building. And that, and I'd like to see that publicly listed to see if there was support for that. And then you could know whether you could pursue that negotiation. But as regards the Whitney Hall library, I believe, I'm not trying to cut the funds here. But in respect for all of the hard work done by the library trustees, I believe you can reflect the amount of money in the bond by lowering the bond a little bit to reflect the funds that they have raised. And therefore I don't think it is 5.8. It's written that. I, I believe it's several hundred thousand dollars less than that. And that would certainly make it more attractive to the public.
So the article currently says to raise it appropriate by $29,000, but to bond 5.5 million dollars.
And that would be an appropriate sum.
4,000 in that capital reserve fund.
We have, Jean Patton has her hand up. Jean?
So I'm going to continue to be the thorn in the bush, as I always say. And again, I want to make it clear that I was on the committee. I indeed feel that something needs to be done and it's quite obvious that Whitney Hall needs immediate attention. My concerns are still, as I mentioned the other night, that we've already voted on 3.8 million dollar water and sewer that we haven't started. I know that Jack said, oh, don't worry, it's not going to be in your tax bill. The users are going to pay for it. Well, who does he think the users are? A group from outside Enfield? I don't think so. And my other. And my other comment is, did anyone happen to see the article in the Valley News about the difficulty of getting materials for building projects? It's great that the interest rates are low and all of that sort of thing, but I'm not sure that everyone has thought this out clearly. And I am also not aware that there has been one minute discussion of where are you going to put the office people for the town while this project is going on?
I can answer that. There was, they did a full layout of a planned move and incorporated different phases of movement and work. So yes, that definitely was taken into consideration.
Shirley?
Like I was saying before, I know that more money will come into. We had a hundred thousand dollar pledge that was made several years ago. And when, I went back to them this spring to let them know they wanted to draw at that time. But when the library was moving forward, they wanted to come back with them again. So I know that we're going to get more money that we can put towards it if they see something is happening. The past few years has been in limbo and nobody is going to put their money up for something I don't know.
Shirley, didn't the, weren't the library trustees at some meeting I was at within the last three months of applying for a federal grant of some sort that's addressed specifically for libraries that you were going to look into? It may have been under the Recobri Act. I'm not sure.
We were, there's lots of funds out there. If you remember when we were approached by a representative customs office, there was a pushback to not let the town manager work with us on that. And so we missed it.
I didn't understand that at all.
And I think the important thing is, we can't promise anybody will win a grant, but we can promise you that we're going to give that task to Ed and Alisa. And I think it would be fair to say that we would be foolish to not pursue it.
Susan Brown, I believe it's Susan, has her hand up. Susan?
Hi, thanks. I got two things. One is I'll help you write an L chip grant. I wrote one of the grants to restore Alumni Hall in Hayrow. And I think you gotta put a roof on that building or you're going to lose the building. It's, it's critical. If you don't do anything else to the building soon, you have got to fix the roof.
Even if it's a blue tarp?
Oh, no.
No, no blue tarp. But we did the roof at the Great Stone Dwelling with the original slate and it's working just fine. So there are people who will do it and I believe the materials are available. So whatever you do, fix the roof.
Shirley?
There's a lot of federal money that's going to be.
Yeah, but I don't think we want to get into that discussion tonight.
But there's one thing you have to watch out about the L chip grant. They didn't have a say in what happened, what you do.
Only if it's over 400,000. Only if it's over 400,000.
It would take, it would take that just for a pass job.
Well, well, this would be more funds kicking in. It wouldn't be, it would pay for the whole thing. Seeley?
Yes, I just, I just want to clarify something, ask another question. Shirley, I really think that the library needs something, you know, building. I've always had, but the question I have is what happened to the design that we did? This town did like 10 years ago and with the new building and the extension and what after that?
That, you mean the one where the light that was an addition put on? Actually, I had it right in my bag in the car, the design. But that happened. If you remember, it was very close vote that it didn't pass. But about three or four weeks before that, the, there was a group of people who wanted the town to buy 78 Main Street and put the town offices down there. So it split the vote. If that hadn't have been proposed, that would have passed then and it would have been paid for.
That was the Dave McIntyre. Was that the Dave McIntyre plan? It was one where there was a bridge, I believe, sort of connecting.
I'd have to look on it to make sure.
Anyhow, that's past history.
I know, but we have paid for it. Someone else would do it again. I mean, and that, everybody liked that design.
These are all rendered. So I.
It was only that it threw a few people away enough so that we didn't get the 60%.
I, I think one of the important things to remember in the process, since we don't do this all the time, is that when you go into this process, there's all the study that goes into it and then you do a rendering. So it's not a full architectural workout. They are able from the rendering and the square footage to use known cost estimates based on current materials. But we haven't done the full, this still is going to require an architect to actually design the floor plan and do everything. You know, there's a basic layout, but the design itself is not fully finished.
I, I think we need to move this along because we have a long agenda tonight. Yes. But the light is on, so I don't see any other hands.
I move that we end the public hearing at this point.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now back in public session.
So do we address, when we do the full warrant, do we want to address it during that portion of the meeting or do we like to do it now?
I say we do it all at one time.
Okay. Okay. I want to make sure we give Lindsay her time. Next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of January 3rd. I didn't see anything.
Yeah, it looked okay to me. I, I moved that we approved them as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Minutes are approved. Board reports.
I have nothing.
Oh, my goodness. My memory is failing me. Wow. The planning board meeting was canceled and that is why I cannot remember what.
And anything from Eva?
And Eva, well, so Eva is working on, and I have not been totally involved on it, but I think if Bridget's along, she could tell you. They are working together with the Mascoma Lake Skating Association. And I spoke to Plow the Trails on the Lake to do a winter activity.
Ice day.
Ice day. Yeah. And it's so, it used to be the wedding, but it's been, I think, rebranded Ice Day.
Same sort of thing. No food.
Yeah. Yeah. I think out of respect for, you know, people's concern about public safety. So it's Saturday, February 12th, and there's a schedule of events from 9:30 to 2 P M. And you'll be seeing that publicity go up and it will be going.
I think it was a blur by today, as a matter of fact. Bridget, did you want to say anything about that?
I can, if you like. Yeah, we do have 9:30 to 2:00. We have all kinds of events, starting with an ice safety demo again at 9:30 with the Lebanon, Canaan and Enfield Fire Departments. We're going to have a ice skating clinic, a nord skating clinic. Hanover Adventure Tours is going to come over with some fat bikes, some e-fat bikes to demo. The Bated Hook is opening a weekend early to be part of it. So you can skate down and get some hot chocolate or a limited menu. And the Mascoma Lakeside Park is going to be there, I think with a warming fire, right, Meredith?
Right.
So we've got a bunch of community groups invested and Eva's helping with some stuff and we'll have relay races as well. So it should be really fun. There are R S V Ps required and I will be sending info out onto the listservs and on Facebook. And you can always email recreation@enfield.nh.us and I will help answer questions. Or my personal email. How's all that?
Interfere for me.
There you go.
The Lakeside Park will meet next week. We normally meet the first Tuesday of the month, but because of this meeting, we had to push it to the following week. We're in negotiations with Mike Burns to begin the wall with new, much needed retaining wall. We continue to add to the match for the land and water conservation grant. We're about $40,000 shy of our goal right now for to match the $125,000 grant from W C. Heritage Commission is going to go before the planning board on the, I think it's the 23rd of February to present, well, it's not really a conceptual, but same sort of thing. Explaining the proposed local historic district, which we're calling the Enfield Historic, Enfield Center Historic Triangle. The Union Church, Schoolhouse and the Enfield Center Townhouse. These are three important buildings. Two of them are on the National Historic Register. And by establishing a local historic district, it will allow us then to become a certified local government town, which in turn will allow for grant funds that we wouldn't otherwise be eligible for. So we have a lot of legwork to do. I've been working with Brandy Laufman at New Hampshire Historic Resources on getting comparables, comparable towns. Bristol, Bristol and Lebanon are both local, have local historic districts and are certified local government towns. So I'm especially looking at their format. And the Heritage Commission itself meets the day after. We had an emergency meeting in early January to decide where to go with this. And it became apparent that it, we were not ready for it to go on the warrant this year. Go on next year's warrant article to establish this local historic district if all goes well. But the first step is to go to the planning board and get full support from the planning board. And that's about it. Managers report.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
So, and I love that Mike Burns is somebody you named because he's a resident, but are we, as you said, the, the committee's doing when voting? Shouldn't that be running through G P W?
Well, they're working, we're working with Leah.
Okay. So, and I just want to make sure we're complying with our purchasing policy because.
Well, nothing's been purchased yet. We got three, well, one guy didn't even submit a bid. We got a second bid. Also a local contractor. He was a lot more money than Mike.
Yeah, I'll be talking to you guys about that.
Okay. Yeah, I just, you know me, I'm a stickler for our purchasing policy and I just want to make sure we are good stewards of the fund.
We, we haven't spent anything yet.
Oh, I'd like to start out just by thanking the town manager search committee and select board for giving me the opportunity to serve as your town manager.
Well, we're glad you're here.
For select board meeting, but I've, I've been here a few weeks and I've enjoyed getting to know the town and the townspeople. There are many things happening in town and the staff has been very helpful and they're dedicated to the community. It's quite obvious. I've also been impressed with the amount of participation and the dedication of the town volunteers. It's a great town that way and I look forward to becoming part of the community and, and working to accomplish things together. With that, I just wanted to update on a, a couple of things. On the 11th of January, right after I started, we received a, an email from EverSource about, they were talking about ISO New England and ISO New England issued a warning about possible rolling power outages. If there's a whole bunch of criteria that would have to happen. Really, if we had a long cold spell during this time, that there's possible energy emergency where there would not be enough power to go around. So EverSource sent this warning out and it's not, I talked to Connor Jennings from EverSource today. I know we have a lot of Liberty customers here and have a pretty good relationship with Connor and it's a, it's very unlikely that this would happen, but it could happen. But I used the opportunity to, to go through our emergency management plan. I talked with the police chief and you know, we have our, our generator ready to have the community building up and running and make sure that we, we stay warm. And I just wanted to let the select board know that this warning did come out, but we did review our plans of what we would do and the town's ready to, to keep services going and to provide warming shelter and services for the community. With that, I'd like to update as well, the invasive species R F Q that we put out. We have received those back. Jack and I both looked through those and we narrowed it down a little bit to some finalists and we decided to go back out and we asked for some supplemental information. So right now they're putting some timelines together and some pricing and those will be due this Friday. And it was kind of Jack's pet project, so I talked to him and the two of us, the two of us are going to work together to pick that final, the final company. But those will be in this Friday and we'll be working to, to get that done. Next, I just wanted to let the select board know, I actually called while I was still working in Claremont, but I've been appointed to the Grafton County Broadband Committee. I did attend my first meeting last week and so I'm one of five managers on that, on that committee. And just wanted to give you a little update. Right now we're waiting to hear the results of a $26.2 million National Telecommunications and Information Administration grant we put in. Things are actually sounding good. We're in the final phases. They're going to be releasing this month and they're still calling us to ask more questions. So it tells us we're still in the running. So it's looking good that we may get that $26 million and be able to move forward, putting that middle mile fiber in. That fiber will be 335 miles of fiber. The county did extend $250,000 of ARPA funds for engineering and the engineers have engineered 110 of those miles to this point. And the committee was also able to get C D B G grants. So the same engineering group is working on putting together the last mile plans for fiber for every town and city in Grafton County. So we will be getting engineered plans of how to get it to the houses. And then in February, the committee is going to be holding three regional meetings. One, February 15th from 5:00 to 7:00 in Hayrow at the Robert E. Clifford Memorial Building. One, February 16th from 5:00 to 7:00 at Plymouth State University Bradford Room from 5:00 to 7:00. And then on February 17th from 2:00 to 4:00 P M, they'll be doing a Zoom meeting that people can participate in and we will send that information out as as we get a little bit more. That's what I had on the Grafton County Broadband. And then I was going to give a brief, I was going to give a very brief solar update that, you know, our solar at B P W here is working good. It's starting to give returns. And Charlie happens to be here, so I'm going to let him go ahead and speak for me in this part and just tell you a little bit about what the solar is doing.
Charlie, tell us about the solar here.
Well, until November, the solar is working good. Something about snow and solar, they don't.
I was going to, I had a bone to pick with you about that. Our roof panels aren't functioning very well.
So in December, we had 11 days with no output at all.
Yeah.
In January, we had 16 days with no output at all. So we all sat here and we looked at the solar panel being covered by snow. And I talked to Jim today, think we're going to start doing something about it. I talked to a couple of engineers at Crowe and I've come up with a plan that I think that we can do virtually using what we already have for equipment.
Yeah.
But I'm looking at, if we could clear some of the panels, then the sun will see those panels and the other panels should melt.
How do you do that?
It's called compressed air.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not a flamethrower.
Come up with, there were a couple of suggestions I had. One was heat tape. One was, I was going to put in a hot water panel and we could circulate hot water through the, the array. But I think blowing off the snow and the ice with air is the cheapest. And I talked to Jim. They have a truck with a compressor on it that they use for clearing coverts. And I think that's going to be what we need.
Charlie, does it have anything to do with the pitch of the roof? I've noticed Kim's panels are completely clear. Our tracker is working beautifully. The panels on the roof, which is pitched out like that, are still covered.
If we could get a way to get the roof so it jacks up vertically at night, like the panels do, we'd solve our problems.
Okay.
I talked to Phil who owns the panel and I asked him, does he mind if we try to clear some of the snow and he has no objection. I talked to Jim and he thinks the leaky work with the equipment that we have on that. I also did a spreadsheet showing what our consumption, what our bills were and what we've got for credit. So far, as of this month, oh, let me go back. We pay Phil a flat, Phil Vermeer owns the panels.
Right.
We pay him $106 per month, flat rate. If he generates more than 5.4 megawatts, then we pay him extra. If he generates less than that, then he gives us a refund in, in June.
Okay.
So far the balance as of today, we owe Phil $316.97 and we have a, a, a. and we have a, a credit with Liberty of $1,130, $31.27. When we generate a surplus, Liberty buys that. What we're also doing is the surplus that we generate here, if we don't use it here, we're using it at the pump station on the Lovejoy group road.
So you're on a net metering plan with Liberty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's just for those two locations. And I, I, I just wanted to let, let, you know, to make the select know what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
It, right now we can buy electricity from Phil for 10 cents per kilowatt. And Phil told me today at some sites, they're paying 20 cents per kilowatt. So by spending some time and cleaning the panels that belong to Phil, I think it's going to save us money.
Well, good luck. Let's hope it works.
Well, I, I know it's going to work. Problem is you're doing it.
Yeah, you kind of get it.
Because the people that are going to be helping me are also the guys who follow the roads and, and do the sidewalks. We don't have a surplus of employees.
And if the snow gets crusted or frozen, you know, with a layer of ice on it, you're going to have a problem.
Well, my plan is that when we have snow, we'll, we'll turn on the, the air, we'll blow off what comes that day.
Okay.
If the snow could ever see the panel, it, it'll clear the panels.
Gotcha.
Unfortunately, at the end of December, we had three rainy days. January 1st, the panel was completely cleared. I estimated six inches of snow and ice and, and three days of rain, it was clear. I'm, I'm looking forward to rain.
I'm not sure our salt budget is looking forward to rain.
Other thing we talked about spraying, they have calcium chloride that they use on the road.
Yeah.
And we talked about spraying that. So we spray the panels with calcium chloride. In a couple of years, we don't have to worry about the panels because we won't have any panels. But that would solve the problem too.
Okay.
I've got this, oh, I didn't do handouts for everybody, but I'll pass around what I've got so you can see it.
Thanks, Charlie.
Any questions, let me know.
Okay.
And that's the end of it.
Okay. When you mentioned your appointment to the Grafton County Broadband, it reminded me that I attended my first Lakes Management Advisory Council meeting in Hockton, but I was appointed to that committee in December, I guess. And the first meeting was in January. It's very interesting. Okay. First thing on the business of the evening is the 2022 budget.
I'm going to have Lisa talk about that.
You've been provided with a lot more information that we have to get into right now, but basically what you have is a presentation of the budget committee's recommended budget. At their last meeting on the 13th, they supported a 5% combined total in merit for employees. And they asked that Jack, well, not Jack, Ed, sorry. Go back and look at the budget and reduce it by the same amount that it would have increased by up to 5%. So that's what happened and the budget that you have in front of you reflects that. The bottom line of the budget can change from what the budget committee was recommending before. And this is what's going to come up tomorrow and we'll discuss the budget hearing. What we're asking for you to recommend or not recommend on the.
Okay.
Which is a good opportunity to remind everyone they can come back and hang out with us tomorrow.
Oh boy.
So is that it on the budgets?
Well, unless you want to go into more detail.
No, no, that's all right. The 2021 annual report, selection report.
So we have a few things. We have the selection report. I did your copy with some edits in it.
Right.
The dedication that was drafted in, we can decide what we like the way it is. We receive a list of badly deaths of people in NPR over the previous year. I have the, there's the sheet that you told you that we have support. So I've identified four people that we would do it in memory of.
Okay.
Anyone else who's seen on the list that I don't recognize as somebody who has served on a committee or done exceptional public service to the community. And then there's proposed cover. There were some other pictures we weren't able to get and choose from, but this is the one I like.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time, like my fingers are.
Yeah, yeah.
And I can't lift them because.
That's, that's what we're covering, but you can start with the selection reports. One with the red on it.
Well, I, I told you to go ahead with changes.
I, I did change that everybody's in the.
Yeah.
Maybe I should have just gotten my usual out.
So the four, four names at the top in the in-memory out are the ones that you.
Those are the ones I've identified as either having served on town boards or committees or otherwise.
Right.
Had something been exceptional.
Yeah.
And that just slightly off topic, but the last imposing name is still has to. Okay. I know that it's probably not right now.
Oh, boy.
With Mr. Cassidy, did you have?
I think we determined that.
Yeah, did we, was there a junior?
There's a junior. No, there's a senior. This is the junior. So I don't know if we should. Yeah, so.
No, no, I wonder, should we put junior?
Oh, well, this is just the list.
So you just need a voice of approval?
Okay, I see what's there.
Yep. So we're all set on the dedication as well?
If you're, if you like what's written, then we can go with that.
I took what you guys gave me and tried to incorporate it, but I don't, and I'm hoping that John will give it his English look over because I stared at the computer for a little too long recently. All I can see are stretches.
How about it, John? You know her better than the rest of us.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, it, it looked fine to me.
Okay, I just was missing commas and prepositions or something. I won't be offended, honestly. At all.
We can take time on that if you find commas and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll set this aside.
Okay, thank you.
Calma review.
Yeah, I just, you know how it is when you write something and then later on you realize you missed.
You have a few days.
Thank you.
And on to the cover.
I'm happy with the cover. I got it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Dramatic.
Colorful.
That's what I thought. There are, there's actually Enfield firefighters in this, though there's some that aren't Enfield.
Yeah.
It was a joint training.
Yeah.
I think that's really neat.
And that's something that we've been looking for and.
Lindsay is going to be joining by Zoom, but she isn't here yet. So you can go over the warrant and skip over the very first piece, which is the title place.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And we can come back to title and place. So essentially we have two petition warrant articles to accept. They both have a qualified signature, so there's absolutely no reason that I think that you would not accept them. So there on there. Traditionally, we put them at the end unless they have to be someplace else. So we've done that because we don't want to read anybody differently.
Yep.
So we can go over each of these articles. So we have Article 7. You have to have sponsor notes over $100,000 first at the second session. Everything 1 through 6 is all going to be by ballot on the second Tuesday of March. So the numbering on this, we can use this number just for tonight, but it will be changed as needed. You actually can decide the order of the articles aside from the fact that $100,000 bonds have to be first. We have the Whitney Hall article on there. Article 7 missing.
Page six.
Turn both sides.
Oh, I see.
I see people. That's good. There's a lot tonight.
Yes.
So it's to raise an appropriate $5.8 million and to issue sponsor notes of $5.5 million. And you withdraw $244,064 and change plus accumulated interest from the library building capital. For the renovation extension of the in-house offices level. So if you would like to add a second article for a public safety building or public safety complex or whatever you're calling it, we can do that. If you have anything specific, so the, the basic wording would be the same. I don't know if we have any funds to, any capital reserve funds to use for that, so that takes that piece right out. Oh, I should go back to Article 7. There's the yellow highlighted with the lines through it. So it is an option for the Board of Selectmen to use the CIP Capital Reserve Fund, but that is not recommended because the community needs to reserve board equipment and vehicles.
Okay.
So technically we can do it as agents to expect. We don't recommend it, so we'll box it out.
Yeah, the budget meeting, they were concerned because it would take a large majority.
We can't, we can't hear it all back here.
Oh, it's the blower.
Yeah, I know it's the blower, but either we turn the blower off, the people need to speak up.
That's fair.
Your time is here and it makes, it doesn't help.
I turned it down once already. I know. Guys, y'all, I'm going to breathe and put your tactics on me. We're lower end to 65 energy savings and maybe it will turn off. It should be at 17.
Thank you.
Well, usually before meetings, they raise it so that we can try to turn it off in the meeting to make the blower turn off. Super technical. I mean, I would like to see the warrant article put on for the public safety building. To make that like Article 8. And then depending on how Article 7 goes, I'm wondering if this Article 8, the current Article 8 for the repairs, do we need to have that money set aside for repairs on top of, or would we, would we table that one if Article 7 were to pass?
Cause I know that would be tabled.
Yeah, that was the original.
So I wonder if that shouldn't go to the end so that we don't have to table it and then, I mean, you know what I mean? Cause there's the, the period of time passes. However, many hours.
We could move back.
If we move it to the end and then we get to the end, then we find out what the count is, then we know whether we need to have discussion on it or if we need to table it.
So why to be.
I mean, not at the, maybe.
Like after, it could be before or after the budget. I would go as far as after 13, which is also money, but before the non-money or. Where do you want it?
I would say that move it to the end of the money.
Yeah, end of the money.
So number eight moves to 13 dash two.
And then the new eight would be if you guys agree, would be the public safety building.
And we're going to use the, the sum that's on the sheet.
The seven million, yeah, $7,259,066. Can you guys hear? I'm trying. Okay. Thank you. It's hard to project with a 95.
So you'll notice on Articles 8 and 9, there's some green highlighting. It's a little hard to read, but basically that wording is to make those non-laxic articles until the completion of the project or until December 31st, 2025.
Okay.
Now, the purpose for that is that if we can't get the project moving quickly enough, we don't, you can only uncover funds one year. And if it takes two years, you're out of luck. So this gives us a window.
Gives you.
As you get the project done without.
Right. Good idea.
Thank you.
So let's see, Article 8, which is now 13 dash two. $150,000 for Whitney Hall repairs, you know, to replace, and I, I changed the wording a little bit from last time. I said, instead of saying including replacement of running siding, I put such as replacement because I didn't want to lock you in to specific items.
Yeah.
So it's things like that. That's a good change. Article nine is to raise an appropriate $130,000 for the Oak Hill Road Bridge. We had previous authorization to borrow $150,000, which turned out to be completely insufficient when the quotes came in, they were much higher. And so we need additional funding. We did have due to so due to having a lot of vacant positions, there were some unexpended funds which ends up going into the un-decimated fund or the unassigned fund balance. And the budget committee is looking to low, because it's, it's rising at a higher rate than they would like. They want it kind of flat with the, the slope of that. We're recommending that you use unassigned fund balance for this, the $130,000 extra that's needed. And that way it doesn't add to the tax rate against the project done and it keeps the unassigned fund balance from rising too high. Cause you need to balance that if you want to aim for 12%, which is your, the selection's goal for that side. And we're, we're right about in that area now. Then we have Article 10 for $120,000 to purchase a roadside mowing unit.
I can speak on that just a little bit. We're waiting, we're actually waiting for a contractor to call us back or a person with some equipment, but we're looking at the 120,000. As you guys may know that they've, you know, having trouble getting rentals and starting to look at, at the need to purchase that. And Jim did talk to a guy today that has another piece of equipment. It's not a full tractor with a roadside mower, but it's a roadside mower that hooks to the front of one of the loaders we already have. That cost would be $80,000, but we're, we're waiting for a call back from him to, to see, he has it available right now and we're trying to see if we can, if we can do some, find some way to secure that to get past town meeting before we actually purchase, so.
So that's up in the air right now.
I guess if you could okay it for the 120 and we can come back to you if we decide to lower that.
Well, because the warrant is going to have to be, it depends on how quickly we hear. So I suggested to Jim that he tried to do a purchase and sale agreement that's subject to town meeting approval for funding, just like we did when we bought the Shannard property for where the community building. And if he has to do a very small deposit, say $1,000 to do that. And then if this is, if we can't get the number down in the warrant before we have to go to branch, which is very soon.
We are covered.
We can amend it from the.
Then it can be amended at town meeting and you can say we have a purchase and sale for this unit that attaches to the loader and we can save $1,000. This is also to come from the unassigned fund balance. And that, so won't add to the taxes because the money's already been raised. Article 11 is the budget article as currently proposed. Obviously that number may change after Article 10 tomorrow. Article 12 is for the capital difference programs, capital reserve fund money. Article 13 is another $30,000 from unassigned fund balance to go into the employee and retireee benefits, central trust, same as last year. Article 14 was to adopt the Enfield Community Power Plan. And at one point, the Energy Committee suggested electric aggregation in there, but they're now asking if those two words, electric aggregation come out and just be the Community Power Plan.
Yeah, I think that could lessen the amount.
The rest of it's the same and because this isn't money, you don't have to have a recommendation on that. So there's, that's crossed out. That's no one reviewed. And then you have the two petitions articles, the first one being to adopt a speed. And then you have the two petition articles, the first one being to adopt SB two for official ballot voting.
Yeah, we tried that once.
And the next one is for increasing the board of selectmen to five members.
Double off.
So, I don't know if you want to, you can vote your recommendations on the articles as discussed tonight. Or if you're all going to be at the meeting tomorrow, or if you're, if you're not, then it would be better if we had all three on here for voting.
I would be the warrant tonight.
And we've done it in the past, you voted, and maybe you change your recommendation after the public here, but.
We can vote. Yeah, I I'm not sure that I will be here tomorrow, Lisa, I'm having more surgery in the morning, and they told me I wouldn't be able to talk.
Oh, well, you can pull up those signs. Let's go through that.
A pleasure.
Will that meeting be in this room?
Yes. So, and if anybody Zoomed in person, so Article seven, the Whitney Hall renovation.
I make a motion that we recommend this article as printed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay, Article eight, you will have the final wording, but it will be very similar to Article seven, but with different numbers.
That's the seven million two hundred fifty nine thousand sixty six dollars for the public safety building? I will make a motion, we recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will see, number. Nine, yes, let's script it down. Now, actually, let's, you can do thirteen two, which is the current eight, but the hundred, we're just moving it, but you can put your recommendation on that, so I don't need to place.
I will make a motion that we recommend.
Second.
The one that's moving, thirteen, right, being thirteen two, until it's the number of Article eight.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion, we recommend Article nine.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ten, I'll make a motion that we recommend Article ten.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. That's the one where we hope we get the eighty thousand dollar gadget.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping.
Well, remember that, we like to save money.
Now, you can vote to recommend the budget article pending, you know, where you could just vote to recommend it, change time.
I'll make a motion that we recommend the article as currently printed.
I'll second that.
This is Article ten?
I'm sorry, Article eleven.
Eleven.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Twelve, which is the capital reserve, this is the payments nickel, did they tell you the nickel story? Okay, we got to make sure you're up on the nickel story.
Yeah, I'm waiting for that to end.
It's tradition. I make a motion, we recommend Article twelve as printed.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen. I make a motion, we recommend Article thirteen, the original.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, do we, we don't have to recommend this, or we can if we want to?
Well, no, you don't, you don't recommend things that are not.
Okay, I was like, got it.
Okay, petition articles, so just petition articles.
You can vote to formally accept the petitions.
Okay. Can we do them both at once, or do they have to be individual?
And since I signed on them, I probably have to refuse myself. But no, okay, because we're just putting them on the ballot.
I move that we formally accept the two petition articles.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And fifteen, we're obviously doing.
Yes. Yeah, so we can go back, oh, look, she's. We can go back to the one if I could. So originally, you had decided to hold town meeting, the second session on Saturday, April thirtieth, outdoors. The cost of tents has skyrocketed.
Yeah, because everybody wants a tent.
Fifty five hundred, over two tents. We have, we could maybe try it though with one.
What size tents are they?
I don't know, they're huge, a hundred by sixty, but you can do the same ones we have last year. Same size.
Bigger than what old home day zones, so I was ready to suggest they could lend their tents.
The other thing is, we're not necessarily comfortable setting up really large tents for crowds, we don't want the liability.
You need an I D, a degree from M I T.
So you can stick with this plan, and if you do, you're going to have to have another public hearing on the sponsor notes of a hundred thousand dollars. But you're going to have to have one for the public safety building anyway. But the other option is, the school is available for this, the Saturdays following the voting, so I think that's. Twelve, because the date is Tuesday, it should be indoors, it does seat six hundred people.
That's fine. Five hundred.
Five hundred, I thought it was.
Oh, no, we cut it back, that was one of the things that saved my life.
We haven't had that many, so social distancing probably is possible. We can provide, you know, the surgical masks for everyone. They do have a sound system, the only cost to us for that would be, they told me, probably the janitor, at thirty nine dollars an hour for the length of the meeting.
So you don't have to have it professionally sanitized, or whatever.
No.
Okay.
Because they do it all the time.
Yeah, so there would be a significant cost savings, but we are indoors. Time wise, it would be beneficial for Jim for public work's budget purposes. But it is your call, I know that.
Well, I'd like to hear what Lindsay has to say, Lindsay, are you ready to roll? I think you're muted.
Muted. She's not muted, but we're not hearing her.
Not hearing.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, sorry, I I took my, my microphone camera off, so. My, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that, whatever you all decide, a couple of things about indoors. A couple of other considerations, so do we have people stand up? I mean, and I, I can figure this out logistically, but moving around, you know, so do we still run and pick up tickets? Because, you know, you can't like, can't pass tickets down a row, everyone has to drop their own ticket into a bucket, or into the ballot box themselves. So, you know, you can't like, pass, so are we going to do that? Remember that Zoom is not an option for town meeting. And I know that we're going to get some pushback on that, but it is not an option. We can figure out streaming, so people can watch, but they cannot participate in town meeting via Zoom. There's no legal mechanism to vote, and trying to keep track of. Who has their hand raised, and who was at the microphone first, and et cetera, and plus, we have to check everybody in, you need to be a resident to participate in town meeting. Plus, I don't know if you've been in a meeting yet that's gotten Zoom bombed, but I was last week, it was fantastic. You know, as a public meeting, we, we just can't have a two-way feed, so. You know, and then, so that could be problematic for people who want to watch at home, and then they want to vote. Well, if we have a, you know, we keep the ballot open for an hour, you know, typically, we do it as we go along. So we can wrap up at the end of town meeting. You know, if we have to, if we delay the votes till after we done all the discussion, so people could come down, then they have to check in to vote. I mean, you know, it just, that's the, that's the problematic, if if folks, you know, or we just go along as we go, and say, you need to come, or not. The other part about having it at the school, it is outside of town limits, so we do need to provide transportation, whether somebody takes it or not. We need to have it available, that we provide transportation to the site and back. So I think those are the main things that I'm thinking of. Just as an extra consideration, I do like the outside venue, I do understand that's an additional cost, more so than last year. I think we could get away with one tent, in fact, it was colder under the tents. Than it was outside of them, but really, we need it for the sa, the audio part, the, you know, the microphone. We really only use the one microphone, so, but I liked that people could stay in their cars. They could, they actually can hear better if they stay in their cars, so there's just a little bit of that. But really, I'm, I will do whatever you all decide. Pass it back to you, this is your decision.
And David, of course.
David?
Am I muted now?
Don't you find out.
Okay. Couple of questions, when you said the school, I was thinking the elementary school, and wondering about ventilation there. But are you talking about the high school auditorium?
Yes.
And. And the, at, at school meeting last year, anyway, they did have an option for people to. They, they had a separate voting station for people who were outside, very few people used it.
The option last year for outside, people couldn't figure out how to sign in, and they were in a panic, running around, and no one could get information, it was a disaster. I highly suggest we not do that.
Well, Lindsay, Lindsay, it worked beautifully last year, so I'd be inclined to, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
I, I'm inclined to agree with that, I know it's going to cost us more money, but I think that's going to be money well spent.
I'd like to maybe consider, we just, the tents don't get filled, right? And I think that we, if we're able, I think people should still be asked to wear masks. And maybe we have a, you know, mask section, or you say in your car, but I think that we would be smart to maybe cut to one tent.
Yeah.
And maybe, to add to what Kate just said, maybe we get one professional tent, because we, so we can have the big table, and the podium, and all of that. But we have some pop-up tents available if we need the cover, but it was much colder underneath those tents last year. I mean, of course, you know, we had a, like a nor'easter on May first, so you just never know. But we could, we could use the old home day tents and other things, if we needed some like shelter pods. And, and have just one big tent, one sixty by forty.
I know they've got a couple of ten by fifteens. And we did use some of those for where they were checking in.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
We can make use of some smaller tents, for sure.
We can encourage people to bring their own, I mean, you know, little ten by ten, a lot of people have pop-ups. I mean, I, I think if we cut the cost by just getting one tent, that would be, that would be helpful.
Okay.
I mean, if you stay in your car, not to say don't come in under the tents, because I like seeing people, but if you stay in your car, you got a heater, and you don't freeze like that.
Yeah, the car option works beautifully.
Can I bring my car?
It does work, unfortunately, there's limited parking.
Yeah.
And there's going to be the bond, with the bond issue.
Yeah.
It's going to be a big crowd.
Big crowd.
So there's going to be a lot of people without a tent, so I hope that it's.
Could we ask that people who are attending, who are physically able to walk from town hall and are not staying in their car, park over at town hall and?
I, I think we did that last time.
Yeah, I mean, I walked, but, yes.
So I think we have everybody. We limited the parking to people who were attending the meeting in their vehicles.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're kind of, so town hall's not that far.
Okay, any other comments before we move on?
Good, okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I did. Oh, well, I guess my comment is that I think we ought to be holding it in the high school at the right time, and not two months later. I think that's probably the big reason why you've got a petition on SB two, is because people are getting tired, oh. Let's go out, let's stay outdoors, as far as I'm concerned. There is more social distancing at that auditorium than there ever is going to be in a tent. Because with twenty rows. They're going now, three sections, that means you could put four people in a row, you could put two hundred fifty people in basically. They're just two, twos on the end. I guess I'm just, I'm saying, why, why do we keep changing? Four of the five towns last year had it in the auditorium in this district. Including Kanan, who's the same size. And their deliberative session had more people than we had in our town meeting. So how did they handle the, the ballot voting? The same way that you have, you, basically, you can go in one door and out the other, through the back. You put it there, you put it at the other side, and you go down the aisle and get to your seat.
I do think the other four towns, in terms of mask ordinance and public health stance, have not had a strong stance like Enfield's. And I don't know if that factored in or not, I mean, I'm a mentality either, I'm obviously sitting there now, but.
It factored in because inside the school, they have to have the masks.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they don't have their masks on when they eat lunch, and the school is full of COVID.
But most, and they, the COVID, if you're following it closely, a lot of it is coming from outside activities, and the kids are obviously hanging out outside of school too.
Yeah, it's not, it's not in the school itself, it's.
I have two grandchildren that get COVID in the schools, they're not in the outside activities.
Yeah, the lunches are in classrooms, so they're not mixed in the cafeteria, but I don't think we have to worry about that for this.
And if we were, if the meeting were held at the school, I would not envision having any, you know, refreshments.
No.
No.
No, that's an absolute, we're not having fresh, the refreshments on the ice day either, for that very reason, even though it's outdoors.
Are, are you allowed to have an overflow crowd inside the community center, if you have a radio that they can hear? I know they can't vote there necessarily, but as last year, someone can go in there with a bucket and collect, so.
The only reason I'm shaking my head no is the acoustics in that community building are horrendous. You know, so like trying to hold a meeting, broadcast anything in there would be, I, I think it would cause people to complain more about the audio. And like, I just, how many more headaches do we need? So I'm, I'm fine with the auditorium, and we can think it through, for sure. Just being very clear, there's no Zoom option, and we also need to provide transportation. There's no Zoom option for the outside meeting either, but I, I think there's going to be more people who want that, because they, there's sort of this. If I'm following some of the comments that I've seen on listserv, and just, just watching, you know, there's sort of this like, this expectation that we can just do everything by Zoom. Especially if it's somewhere inside that has audio visual, et cetera, and we cannot, so we just need to be very clear about that. There's no legal precedent to do it, we, there's just no way, so I'm good to do it inside the auditorium, and we can figure out the logistics for sure, but.
In addition to transportation, I talked to Jeff Taylor, he said he could have one at his side, and rent a, you know, passenger van, and truck people back and forth from the community building parking lot, over to the school, just keep making runs.
That's more generous than me, I was like, y'all take the blue taxi.
But we have to provide transportation, so there you go. We could do that, but it's just, Orange apparently rented a bus, and nobody used it, but you have to have it available.
I think of buses.
So are we about to change our minds here?
I mean, I, I.
I still like you, I'm not comfortable being indoors in March. David? David?
Hard, hardest social distance in a, in a van.
It's a legal requirement.
You, you don't have to take your van, John, you can drive yourself.
Yeah. I don't have strong feelings one way or another, I want, I would like you guys to vote for it, and I'm, no.
I'm good with outdoors.
Me too. Okay, Lindsay, anything else?
No, I'll, I'll be ready whenever we, we need, so we're looking at April thirtieth?
Yep.
Once it's posted, yeah, like, and, and as like, we explained in emails, you know, once it's posted, that's the problem of, of moving it. So one of the things with outdoors and extending it just a little bit, is that it gives time for some things to calm down. Versus if we scheduled it for March and then wanted to change it, we cannot change it due to COVID, that's not an emergency, by, you know, according to the state of New Hampshire, so. But we get to set whatever that meeting date is, whatever we want it to do, until, you know, and then, once it's warned, that's. that's the problematic comes in changing it. So I think that this is probably the most pragmatic option, just to, for one more year. It's not, we all, we all want it in March, but it might be the most pragmatic.
Okay. Moving on, the Enfield Upper Valley Prosecutors Association Fund.
We just wanted to update you on this. We thought about bringing a motion forward, but we're gonna, we're gonna do a little bit more research on it. But the, the, the funds moving to Enfield, so we're gonna have money from the other communities coming in for us to, to pay the prosecutor. And we're thinking about, I guess, the best way to set that up, so money can come into that fund and be paid out with the least amount of red tape and getting permissions every time we wanna write a check. So we'll be, we'll be looking at that. We're gonna be talking to Hanover and some other places. Hanover's been the one running it. See if maybe we can, we can set up some type of bond, and we'll, we'll probably need to run that through the select board to get that fund set up. And then we'll be able to, to move it either on the treasurer or my approval to, to write those checks and move it over. But that's, that's what we're looking at. We were gonna talk about actually having that motion tonight, but we're gonna do a little more research, so we get it the first time.
Great. Committee membership, the Old Home Days Committee. We have four new volunteers for the Old Home Day Committee. Josh Adjutant, Dawn Archibald, Misty Tuttle, and Dolores Struckoff. Didn't you have one more?
That's all I found.
That's it.
I thought I had somebody, and I, yeah.
Those are the only ones.
It is Kelly, it is Kelly Rose.
Kelly Rose. Yeah, I think that.
Kelly Rose.
Yep, yep, she did ten.
Sorry about that.
Okay, I will need her contact information, because we have a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday.
Yep, and she filled out the form.
Yeah.
Her following directions.
How did we miss her?
I don't know.
It's anything.
I thought it was somebody else, and I just could not find it.
I think it's great. Probably geared in a million things.
Yeah.
Boy, five new members. Yes.
We still can't hear that.
Sorry.
Anyone that thinks we don't need.
Okay, Shirley is a member of the Old Home Day Committee.
Yep.
She's one of two holdovers from the former Old Home Day Committee. She and Amber Bissonette. So Shirley, the new members, for your benefit, are Kelly Rose,
Thank you.
Josh Adjutant, Dawn Archibald, Misty Tuttle, and Dolores Struckoff. We've gotta get another guy, because Josh Adjutant is gonna feel like odd man out.
He'll go with it.
Or he'll be in heaven, I don't know.
I make a motion that we appoint the members to.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, as soon as we're on a roll. Next one is Lakeside Park Committee Membership, David Bouffet.
I make a motion that we appoint David Bouffet to the Massoma Lakeside Park.
Second that?
Okay, all in favor? Okay, David is now an official member. He's been coming to all our meetings, so he might as well be an official member.
I'll have the box for you next meeting, I ran it out.
Okay. Massoma Lakeside Park Fund acceptance of donations in the amount of $5,200.
I make a motion that we accept the donation. Thanks.
Second that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Property tax refund.
So I hope you read that over, it was quite lengthy.
Really interesting.
Detail.
It's very interesting. They run a successful business, and they didn't know they had to pay taxes.
Yes, yes.
That was in there.
So.
I will make a motion that we grant the tax refund as written.
All second that?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Local Board of Health update. I think this is so weird that the select board is a board of health with no board of health type of training through the board of health.
They just.
Yeah, it's really just to, to be able for the health officer to express to someone in a public meeting what's happening and to discuss any health issues that may be ongoing. We're not gonna come here and discuss private one-on-one matters of health things, but if we have a continual issue throughout the town, it's something that, that we need to talk about. And just, just make sure that there's a little oversight.
Okay, so do we have to accept this? I mean, that's saying we have choice. It's just, we are the public, we are.
It just says you are.
You know, we are, and that's that.
Yes, you have the choice.
Do we get a T-shirt that says this?
No, I don't want. I like that.
We just wanted yours, too.
Sorry for my previous skepticism. I just was wondering what we were signing ourselves up for.
And the administrative items, you're gonna pass out, right?
I do have them for signature in this folder.
Okay.
So there's the ratio study, which I did not print the whole study for you, because it's so many pages, but it was in your electronic packet, and you have the summary page.
Yep.
So that is something that's done by Barbara Nish, the contractor assessor. And it's under review by the state, so they, they review it. So I'll just need you to sign off on that. And the tax warrant. Is there? And if you'd like to go on the veteran's tax.
Oh, yes.
I made a motion that we authorize the veteran's tax credit as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question on informational items? Just to follow up with the, on the trustee, that's us. Did we ever work with our auditor to figure out what we were gonna do to kind of finalize and close out the, I don't even know what we call it. I call it the Ponzi scheme, the money that was stolen from us.
Oh, oh, yes.
I just, I kinda like to make sure that we get some, and allocate our loss to whatever fund it has to go to, and for financial purposes, close that.
Yeah.
Why do you think we can't? Yeah, but can we not allocate what we project we're gonna lose, and we have to leave it open forever while we get $5?
Well, we need a report from the trustee of the trust fund, I would think.
I just, I, there's gotta be a financial mechanism by which we can either allocate it as, and then.
I'm sure that the auditor's on top of that, but we're just discussing it. They are going to be.
You know how much I love the audit. The audit report's one of my favorite, Rachel, guys.
Are there any other items come before the board, before we close the meeting? Either on the screen or here in, in the flesh? Not seeing any other requests.
I think there was a question under, oh, we didn't do it on bulleted, though, so I guess the question of committee membership and stuff will go back to Kevin Roger. For the issue that's.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we, because we kind of accidentally skipped one piece under that item. So it sounds like Ed can talk to the member again.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm with you now.
Because our policy is, if we were going to remove someone, that we have to warn a meeting and.
And it's a delicate situation. I don't, I think it should be discussed in non-public.
I don't think.
I don't know that.
I don't think legally can discuss it in non-public, because as a public official, you are subject to public scrutiny. It's what you sign up for.
Okay.
But I think it invites the larger discussion of, as we go into doing some policy review, how we onboard people and how we talk to people and engage them to be good members. Teach them about right to Noah, you know, just the basics, because.
Basic training.
Yeah, we haven't been doing that, and so we could do better, and I think we can also set expectations of stability and of kindness and just basic human treatment. So just wanted to toss that out as a topic for the future.
Good topic.
Because I've had two people indicate that they are potentially interested.
Well, I had a conversation today with a member.
Okay, I had two this week, and that really concerns me to have two people considering quitting the same committee when we've already lost other committee members, and we lost the minute taker from that committee. And there have been trespassing issues. We have potential legal action that will be taken because we can't discriminate against people for, with a disability, so there's that piece, and there was some of the trespassing as a legal issue. So I think there's a lot to unpack.
He has been spoken to in the past.
Yep, I think.
Yes.
Putting and work on it for us. I think it's a good step.
In fact, they ran training sessions when I first became a selectman.
And I think we maybe need to.
It's a good idea, David.
One of the things I'd had to add about was, in my one-on-one with him, was just the general idea of how we onboard people in the school district. You take office, and they're like, here are the three sessions you can go to. Which one would you like us to sign you up for? And it's forceful, but, you know.
The other thing we can do, we've done this.
Light on.
We did this in Claremont when I was there, but we, it costs a little bit of money, but we had NHMA come in electronically and teach a class.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And we recorded it.
That's a good idea.
Well, there was a webinar that I attended that I got the video link to, and I have forwarded that to a number of people. I don't think anybody watched it.
But maybe we institute a policy of, you know, you watch the training and we give you a signature page. Well, I mean, in manufacturing for safety, you sign off saying you completed this.
It's a project to be worked.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we can put that together.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.